Call this meeting to order. Can I have a motion to excuse Board Member Olguerias from the special board meeting today?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I have a roll call?
President, Mr. Nishii.
President.
Vice President, Mr. Noyola.
President.
Clerk, Mrs. Yokiyama-Bui.
Present.
Board Member, Mrs. Mendoza.
Present.
Board Member, Mrs. Yu.
President.
Can I have Tatiana Yok- Board Member Tatiana, Clerk Tatiana Yokiyama-Bui come up and give us the pledge allegiance?
Sure. Please stand, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Really quick, before we start with everything else, I want to thank everyone who's here on a Saturday, beautiful Saturday today, our school board members, our superintendent, our staff that's here on a Saturday, to make a really important decision about the future of our community. A lot of people think teachers are an eight to three job, right? It's easy job, get summer vacations and all that stuff. No, actually, it's a 24/7 job. It's one of those jobs that, as my wife keeps telling me, it's a forever job. And you have administrators thinking, well, I got a little bit more ability to do things to make a bigger impact over a larger group of people, and they think, well, that's just a nine to five job too, right? Isn't it? And then you find out, well, we've got all these ministries here on a Saturday. So I want to also thank the board candidates for coming in and sacrificing part of your Saturday in trying to be a big part of this school district. And there are a lot of challenges that we face, and so being able to have strong people to face these challenges is really important. And as a body, I'm pretty sure I'd be unanimous in thanking you for coming in tonight, today. And thanking my wife also has to come to these meetings as well. So is there any public comments on this particular topic? Adam, clerk?
I see none.
Thank you. We need a motion in a second to approve the following interview and voting process for trustee area five provisional appointment.
So moved, Mendoza.
Second, Noyola.
Okay.
Candidates will draw from numbers to determine the order of interviews. The candidates will remain in the district conference room prior to their own interview. While the interviews are being taken place, the process will be repeated for each candidate. Each candidate will have 20 minutes to answer the questions, roughly two minutes per question. Candidates are able to be in the boardroom after their interview is completed and prior to the board discussion and voting. A roll call is required for, is requested for each candidate, and it'll take place after our interviews. That way, everybody gets a chance to be voted on. Board members can vote yes on more than one candidate, because more than one, actually, probably all of you are very qualified. The board, the candidate with the most votes will then be nominated and appointed. If there's a tie, if there's two people have the same number of votes, the, after the initial vote, then the board will go through the same process of voting until the person who tied is the person who gets the most votes and a majority of the vote. So, I think we already did the motion and the second. All right. So all in favor of what we just discussed, please say aye?
Aye.
All right, great. At this time, we'll have the candidate lottery to determine the order of the candidates that will be interviewed.
You don't have to be in.
Okay.
So what we'll have you do is we'll have you state your name, draw a number, and then announce your number.
All right, there are one through seven in here, so we'll start with you.
Maria Villegas.
Number seven.
Mel Cortez.
Five.
Jeanne McHatten.
Three.
Hugo Incezo.
One.
Ayos Tamorax.
Four.
Samantha Lawrence.
Six.
Camille Wallace-Flanigan.
Two.
All right. The lottery's been completed. Go back to the board conference room. Can we have the restated numbers? Oh, never mind. So I'll restate the numbers. Mr. Cortez is number five, Mr. Hugo Incezo is number one, Ms. Lawrence is number six, Ms. McHatten is number three, Mr. Tamorax is number four, Ms. Villegas is number seven. Okay. And you know what? I was not a teacher, so I have to even put them in order. So which one did we miss?
Just start over.
Okay. All right, starting with number one, Mr. Cortez is number five.
Do you want them in number order?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number order, Mr. Incezo will be first, Ms. Wallace-Flanigan will be second, Ms. McHatten will be third, Mr. Tamorax will be fourth, Mr. Cortez will be fifth, Ms. Lawrence will be sixth, and Ms. Villegas will be seventh.
Are we good?
I have two for Villegas.
There's two for Villegas, that's inherent.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, my question. Thank you.
Okay. We are ready for candidate number one, Mr. Hugo Incezo.
That was fast. Should've just stayed here.
It's okay. So we'll go through each of the questions, and the timer will be there for you. We'll have 20 minutes, and so make sure you're speaking into the microphone. We'll start with question one. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Wonderful. Well, first of all, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. The purpose of public schools, in my view, is to provide education and resources for students and families to learn about our country, our region, and develop good citizens who can contribute to society in all facets of life. Whether it may be as a future doctor, engineer, educator, communicators, athletes, business and policy leaders, nurses, computer scientists, or for many, for working in many of the trades that our society needs, public education is the first entry point for members of our society. Public education is the great equalizer in our society as well, and it is imperative that this foundation of American education for our society is provided with a sound leadership that encourages positive change, that is future-looking and forward-thinking, even anticipating the needs for careers that today may not even exist yet. I believe board leaders must think about preparing students to adapt and rise to the challenges that the future will bring. Creating the policy framework, managing the finances and resources to plan for the future is what I believe a school board should do, while at the same time, staying close to the communities it serves, listening to their concerns, and making the difficult decisions that need to be made for the benefits of children and their families, while managing the valuable human resources that serve students and the community.
Thank you. Question two. What are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? What is your highest priority and why?
I believe that the diversity of ABC is one of the strengths that we have here in our district. Our children and families can learn about so many different cultures that enrich our knowledge and that create appreciation for others. This must be harnessed in a positive way to make our district a model for education. The brand that the district has with so many quality schools is also an important asset that can help to retain and attract new students to address the challenge of declining enrollment. The multilingual resources available here in the district with dual immersion programs is another asset that we should leverage to retain and attract students. My priority would be to focus on maintaining the high standards that ABC is known for. This is what makes the district attractive to families. We need to maintain this and build upon these, these district assets. All schools in ABC should be a model for families that are looking for the best education for their families.
Part of your Saturday in trying to be a big part of this school district. And, uh, and there are a lot of challenges that we face. And so being able to have strong people to face these challenges is really important. And as, as a body, I'm pretty sure I'd be unanimous in thanking you for coming in tonight, uh, today. And thanking my wife also has to come to these meetings as well. So is there any public comments on this particular topic? Adam Clark?
I see none.
Thank you. We need a motion and a second to approve the following interview and voting process for trustee area five provisional appointment.
Second, Noyla.
Okay. Candidates will draw from numbers to determine the order of interviews. The candidates will remain in the district conference room prior to their own interview. While the interviews are being, taking place, the process will be repeated for each candidate. Each candidate will have 20 minutes to answer the questions, roughly two minutes per question. Candidates are able to be in the boardroom after their interview is completed and prior to the board discussion and voting. A roll call is required for, is requested for each candidate and will take place after our interviews. That way, everybody gets a chance to be voted on. Board members can vote yes on more than one candidate because more than one, actually probably all of you are very qualified. The board, the candidate with the most votes will then be nominated and appointed. If there's a tie, um, if there's two people have the same number of votes, the, after the initial vote, then the board will go through the same process of voting until the person who tied is the person who gets the most votes and a majority of the vote. So, I think we already did the motion and the second. All right. So all in favor of what we just discussed? Please say aye.
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 All right, great. At this time, we'll have the candidate lottery to determine the order of the candidates that will be interviewed. So what we'll have you do is we'll have you state your name, draw a number, and then announce your number. All right? There are one through seven in here. So we'll start with you.
Maria Villegas. Number seven.
Mel Cortez. Five.
Jeanie McHatten. Three.
Hugo Inceso.
One.
Nios Tamaraks. Four.
Oh, Samantha Lawrence. Uh, six.
Camille Wallace Flanagan.
Two.
All right. The lottery has been completed. Go back to the board conference room. Can we have the restated numbers? Oh, never mind. So I'll restate the numbers. Mr. Cortez is number five. Mr. Hugo Inceso is number one. Ms. Lawrence is number six. Ms. McHatten is number three. Mr. Tamaraks is number four. Ms. Villegas is number seven. Okay. And you know what? I was not a teacher, so I have to even put them in order. So which one did we miss?
Just start over.
Okay. All right, starting with number one, Mr. Cortez is number five.
Do you want them in number order?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Number order, Mr. Inceso will be first. Ms. Wallace Flanagan will be second. Ms. McHatten will be third. Mr. Tamarak will be fourth. Mr. Cortez will be fifth. Ms. Lawrence will be sixth. And Ms. Villegas will be seventh. Are we good?
I have two for Villegas.
There's two for Villegas, it's an error.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, my question. Thank you.
We are ready for candidate number one, Mr. Hugo Inceso.
I was asked. Should've just stayed here.
It's okay. So we'll go through each of the questions and the timer will be there for you. We'll have 20 minutes, and so make sure you're speaking into the microphone. We'll start with question one. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Wonderful. Well, first of all, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. The purpose of public schools, in my view, is to provide education and resources for students and families to learn about our country, our region, and develop good citizens who can contribute to society in all facets of life. Whether it may be as a future doctor, engineer, educator, communicators, athletes, business and policy leaders, nurses, computer scientists, or for many, for working in many of the trades that our society needs, public education is the first entry point for members of our society. Public education is the great equalizer in our society as well, and it is imperative that this foundation of American education for our society is provided with a sound leadership that encourages positive change, that is future-looking and forward-thinking, even anticipating the needs for careers that today may not even exist yet. I believe board leaders must think about preparing students to adapt and rise to the challenges that the future will bring. Creating the policy framework, managing the finances and resources to plan for the future, is what I believe a school board should do, while at the same time, staying close to the communities it serves, listening to their concerns, and making the difficult decisions that need to be made for the benefits of children and their families, while managing the valuable human resources that serve students and the community.
Thank you. Question two. What are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? What is your highest priority and why?
I believe that the diversity of ABC is one of the strengths that we have here in our district. Our children and families can learn about so many different cultures that enrich our knowledge and that create appreciation for others. This must be harnessed in a positive way to make our district a model for education. The brand that the district has with so many quality schools is also an important asset that can help to retain and attract new students to address the challenge of declining enrollment. The multilingual resources available here in the district with dual immersion programs is another asset that we should leverage to retain and attract students. My priority would be to focus on maintaining the high standards that ABC is known for. This is what makes the district attractive to families. We need to maintain this and build upon these, these district assets. All schools in ABC should be a model for families that are looking for the best education for their families.
Thank you. Question three. As a trustee, what do you see as the primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role, both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
In my opinion, the role of a trustee is to be a voice for the community's needs as they relate to education and to the overall well-being of the students in the entire school district. It is also about making important decisions and providing stewardship for the most efficient and effective use of the resources available to provide services to the students and to the community, while at the same time, working closely with teachers, administrators, and classified employees to support them to create a professional environment that includes professional development, technology, access to instructional materials that will ultimately serve to provide students with quality instruction to meet and exceed academic standards for all students in the district. I would work closely with the board, with other board members, to build consensus on how the board can accomplish the educational goals for our students in the short term, while planning for the future needs of the district in a never-changing environment.
Thank you. Question four. What are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
As a parent in the district and in my interactions over the years with other parents, the priority for families always seems to be to ensure that our district schools can provide a safe and positive environment in which students can learn and thrive. Every family wants their children to have the opportunity to succeed academically, to feel welcome in their classroom, to help them meet standards and prepare them for college or career, to provide them with options for extracurricular activities such as arts or athletics, and now, after-school programming as well. At the same time, with the understanding that all students are different, parents want to make sure that the schools work with all students, whether they need a more challenging and rigorous curriculum, tutoring, support with reclassification for English learners, or support with student IEPs. Every family wants to know that their school administrators, counselors, teachers, and staff are all working together focused on supporting all students in the district.
Thank you. Question five. What would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
Well, I believe that in order to accomplish the goals set by the school board, it is super-important to have trust with all those involved in the decision-making process. I believe that those who work in education, as Mr. Nishi said at the beginning of the meeting, it is a very 24-hour job. So those who work in education understand that they serve a higher purpose, which is to put students at the center of everything we do. The reason my interest, the reason I am interested in serving on the board is for the children. I would hope that this mission is ingrained throughout all levels of decision-making at the district. I would make it a priority to build that trust to ensure that we are all working on common goals. At the same time, I would also look at benchmarks from different districts in California with similar size, similar count, school count, similar demographics, to evaluate our district's position in different areas, thus allowing to gauge different parameters and assist in decision-making. I would also reach out to board members in other districts to gather more input in order to have more information available and be able to make the best possible decisions.
Thank you. Question number six. Describe how you would respond if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot issue.
That's a good one. Well, as a representative of the school board, I would first hear out the parent and thank them for expressing their concerns. I would let them know that they should first bring the matter to the attention of their school site to provide their school with the opportunity to address their concerns. I would encourage them to follow up if their concern was not addressed, being, was not addressed by their school, by bringing the attention, the matter to the attention of the superintendent's office. And then, depending on the issue, I would bring it to the attention of the superintendent.
Thank you. Question seven. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for students, teachers, staff, parents, community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Well, there are diverse ways for different groups to express themselves and make themselves heard. Board meetings serve a purpose to gather public comment on a broad range of issues and also put these issues on the record for all to be aware. Board members should also use surveys to gather input on relevant issues from teachers, from staff, community members. Site visits by board members are another excellent way to hear from students, teachers, staff, and parents. This can be done by attending school-site council meetings that are usually attended by individuals from all of these groups. District, district English learner advisory committee meetings, D-LAC meetings, and other advisory committee meetings are also great forums to hear from a good cross-section of the school community. These are forums where there is an exchange of information, an open dialogue where much can be learned. Board members are liaisons, as you all know, to some of these committees, and they all have the opportunity to attend. I've been involved in several of these committees, and I, it is always great to see board members there and be able to interact and engage with them. So I see those as important opportunities to deliberate and interact with, with the community.
Thank you. Question eight. Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a new member of the board.
I've been very involved over the years at ABC. All my four children have attended school in, in the district here. My youngest is currently a senior at GARR. I have two grandchildren who are attending elementary here in the district. Thus, I continue to have a vested interest in making sure that ABC provides all students with the opportunity to excel. I've served on different committees as a parent leader. I've served on school-site council at GARR, NEMUS, the ad hoc facilities committee that recommended the school bond, the legislative policy committee, and currently, I serve on the strategic planning committee. One of the best experiences that I, that I had while serving on some of these different committees was as a, as a president of the district English learner advisory committee, the D-LAC, for a few years. One of the things that we did is that we worked as a group to start visiting different schools on back-to-school nights in order to connect with more parents and get more involvement and participation on each, from each of those schools. We went to FERI, Ross, some of the schools in Hawaiian, Aloha, and others, NEMUS. And the idea was to get more participation from each of these schools, from parents to, to serve on the local, the school district, the school site, English learner committees. We wanted to create more awareness of the need to support students in the process of reclassification. And by doing this, we actually doubled the number of parents participating in the, in each school's English learner committees. I truly enjoyed working with others and collaborating as a, as a team to, to find solutions together and address some of the challenges faced by English learners. I've also been very involved in athletics by providing guidance and support for student athletes to pursue college athletics, specifically in soccer. In the last two years, as an example, I supported the GARR coaching staff with assistance in video, video analytics, and that eventually helped the student athletes to better prepare. And I'm happy to, probably you know, but the school won the league, the Mid-Cities League, with a record of nine and one, only one loss in the, in the, in the season. And the school was able to reach the quarterfinals in the CIF this past winter. It had been 19 years since the school, since the school had won league, and back then, actually, my, one of my other sons was on the, on the team. On a professional level, my recent work of five-plus years in education technology allowed me to work with many districts in the state to support them with the adoption of digital instructional materials in the areas of science and social studies curriculum, as well as providing support with supplemental cross-curricular resources. This allowed me to learn how different districts integrated technology into their classrooms and allowed me to work closely with teachers and administrators in planning and delivering ongoing professional development to meet their needs and support their students. Working in this field also allowed me to gain a much greater understanding of teachers' needs and insight on the challenges they face every day in the classroom. I worked closely as well with administrators in budgeting from different funding sources for their instructional materials and professional development to implement, at the time, the new next-generation science curriculum in several districts in, in Southern California as well as in Stockton. Lastly, having run for trustee area five in the past, it gave me some wonderful insight into our amazing community. From Norwalk to Cerritos to Lakewood, I walked many different neighborhoods, visited different schools, and got the support from many members of the community, and that was an experience that I truly valued and I cherish.
Thank you. Question nine. What are your ideas to improve the district?
Well, the current board leadership, I'm sure, has some wonderful and valuable experience, and I'm sure you've all explored many different ideas. I would look forward to contributing and supporting some of the ideas that are being considered to improve the district. There are also a couple of ideas that I would share. One is in the area of declining enrollment, which I believe is one of the biggest challenges facing all school districts in Southern California. Perhaps one thing that we could do is appeal to students currently in private schools whose parents may be willing to consider giving our schools the opportunity to enroll their children. The academic quality and rigor of our schools, along with the recent investment in facilities, may make them take a second look at our school, the schools in our district. Moreover, with the current economic climate, some families may need to reconsider paying high tuition, and this may be another reason for them to consider our public schools. Dual immersions, dual immersion programs are another potential enticement for families to come to ABC. These are some unique strengths offered at our districts that can be marketed to bring new families that may, that may be considering private schools. Also, establishing creative partnerships with programs from music to athletics can be another good way to raise visibility and attract families to our schools.
Thank you. Final question. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, teacher and staff considerations, state and federal law, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
I would say the recent facilities bond is an issue that I would cite in this case. Having served on the ad hoc facilities committee, it became obvious that the district had many infrastructure needs that required attention. Some were important safety issues that were of paramount importance. Others were technology-related, that were necessary in order to adapt to a rapidly changing technological reality that we live in education. And others were in athletics that addressed school pride and were important in also keeping up with neighboring districts to retain, to attract and retain students. There were many in favor of supporting a bond to finance some of these infrastructure needs. At the same time, there were many residents who were opposed out of legitimate fiscal concerns with the increase in property taxes that would be required to fund the bond. As a resident, I advocated with my neighbors and other groups to support the bond. In my view, if we did not invest in the upkeep of our schools, they would deteriorate, and property values in our area could be negatively impacted, which was not something good for the community. And this is what I share with my neighbors as I supported the bond. Like any issues, you have to address the pros and the cons, as well as the opportunity costs of not taking action. You have to engage in an open and sincere dialogue and then make the best possible decision with the information available while also weighing the consequences of action or inaction.
Thank you so much, Mr. Inceso. We appreciate your input today and sharing with us your thoughts. We'll now transition to our next candidate, number two, Ms. Wallace Flanagan.
Thank you very much again for your time, for being here on the weekend, and good luck with the rest of the day.
I think, yeah, we should adjust the mic just so we hear you nice and clear today. Thank you for being here this morning. We'll go through a set of questions, and the timer is there so you can see the time rolling. We'll have about two minutes per question. So we'll start this morning by having you share what you see as the basic purpose of public educa, public schools, and what the role of the Board of Trustees in, is in fulfilling that purpose.
So, I think that public schools are to provide fair and, um, a, a whole child education. Like, we wanna make sure that they're getting art and, you know, dance, as well as the academics that are for all of the children. Like, some children need extra tutoring and programming in that way, and someone, some kids need enrichment and, uh, programs for the, you know, like, AP classes and the, the classes that help them excel, start college early, all of those things. So, I just think that we should be helping any child wherever they are, meeting the children where they are, and for, what is the role of the Board of Trustees? I believe that we help, help make sure that's going forward by, um, I'm sorry, policies, budgets, and programs that we implement. We know the rules and everything that the teachers and, as in, are enforcing, but we help make sure that all the, all the nuts and bolts are all in order and everything is working together.
Thank you. Question two. What are you proud of in this district and what would you like to accomplish as a board member? What is your highest priority and why?
I am new to this district, and I really am enjoying this for my family. I have a son and a daughter, and they go to two different schools. And first of all, I love that you guys let my son in because at first, he wasn't in. There was not a lot of room, but we went through the, um, appeals process, and it was so welcoming, and it was scary. I was like, this is my first time ever, but I'm like, there are people like me, and they care. And we had to sit for two hours, me and his dad, and listen to the stories, listen to the different cases, and you guys said yes to everyone. And it wasn't this district, but it was the larger school district, like the LA County. And I was like, there are people, they care, and I was like, I would like to do that in my community. So then, when this opportunity came up, I'm like, I can do that in my community, you know, and get involved, and I know that I'm a parent, but I also have a voice, and I ca, I actually care about what's going on. And what I most like about this particular school district is, it is excellence. I feel like... I feel like you guys do things in ABC, or we do things in ABC, was excellent as far as programming, as far as the teachers. The teachers at my daughter's school, the administrators. This is, and we've been in a few school districts. So this has been my favorite one so far. I feel like it's a sense of family, like they're looking out for one another. At both my son's school and my daughter's school, I feel like the admin are looking out for them, the counselors are looking out for them. We told them a lot of things that were, you know, important to us, and they check in on it, they check in on my daughter. It's really a family atmosphere. And I feel that no matter, my goal is, no matter what happens, I know there's a lot of change, budgets, things that need to change because of the... I believe that there were low student count and teachers moving around, but I want to make sure that the students stay first. That is what I would like because a lot of times we end up having to make changes, and we do what's best. But the kids, if they're not growing and meeting the whole-child requirements, as, you know, we talked about in question one, then what are we doing this for? The kids are the ones that are the future. They're going to be here.
Thank you. Question three, as a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role, both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
Okay, as the trustees, we are the bridge and the voice of reason. I want to be an active listener. I want to be, and I don't want to just listen. I want to take with the families, the admin, the teachers, and the children, the support staff. I want to hear what they're concerned, I don't know if we can do all that. But I want to hear their concerns if I'm able to and help address it. For example, I went to an assembly at my son's school, and there was a line out of the door, like they were giving away something. But it was for their assembly. And about 20 of us, we were at the end of the line, we didn't get to get in. And they gave clear instructions. They said, if your child is from this day to this day, you come at the, you know, the noon day ceremony. If your child is from this day to this day, then you come at the evening. But people didn't listen, and when we came back for the evening, it was evident that they didn't listen. So I went in and I talked to the office staff, and I was like, what can we do about this? I said, here, I have an idea. How about you give them a flyer that's blue if they're on these days, and then they get a green flyer? And they're like, that's a good idea, okay. But I didn't really, I didn't know if they were going to listen. You know they listened, and they did that for the next one. And guess what? Everybody got in. So I would like to bring those type of ideas to this space.
Thank you. Question four, what are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
Okay, I'm new to my community. I just moved a month ago to Norwalk. So, I'm not really sure about everything that's going on in the community, but in my research, I found that learning loss is an issue. And talking to some of the teachers, I discovered that since COVID, they don't feel caught up yet as far as the learning loss. So, I believe that, and for me, it's the social media and the AI and being too technology-based. Like, all my daughter's homework is, for the most part, doable online, which is good, kind of. But I want her to have writing and paper assignments as well. So I don't know if that's a... Yeah, I think that's a student academic learning issue. I think that they need both. They need the AI, they need the technology, but let's not make all their homework able to do on tablets and able to be done with just AI help.
Thank you. Question five, what would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
My saying is, my home is, my saying in my home is do it right so you don't have to do it again because I'm going to make you do it again. So, I thought you could make it and don't do anything, but I would tell them, like, I do not believe that this is enough to go forward with. Can you please add to this? So I would just ask them to, since I believe that ABC is excellent, I would ask them to make it, you know, make it better. Not in those words, but please add more to this by rechecking your work, rechecking your resources. Maybe we need to bring in another resource. So I would not just tell them, oh, this is not enough. I would give them some pointers or the areas in where I think that it needs more support in the report.
Thank you. Question six, describe your response if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot issue.
I liked this one because I used to be an executive assistant, and because I was so kind, everybody would always come to me and act like if they talked to me and asked me to do things for my boss, that I would just do it. And I would listen to them and, you know, for a specific amount of time before I shut it all down, and I would let them vent and say, oh, wow, okay. But I never agreed, so that is kind of my strategy. Like, I acknowledge what you're saying, I understand, and we have to consider it, but I'm not going to say yes. I'm not saying no, but I always feel that we should listen, though, especially when it's a concerned parent and a concerned child. Like, the kids are talking now, and I love that because my daughter followed me to the side the other day. She said, huh, it's not fair what they're doing in politics and doing to our nation, and they're going to leave it to us. And I was like, that's so true. So I do want to hear. I want everyone's voice to be heard, just like I want mine to be heard. But I know that we can't not just agree in, just because you cornered me, I'm not intimidated by that, so.
Thank you. Question seven, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for students, teachers, staff, parents, community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Okay, well, I know that we need to meet people where they are, and I like the idea of town hall meetings. I know that we have, like, a few meetings set up like that. I've been to one or two. You know, PTAs, things like that, for the parents that work, virtual Zoom meetings, surveys, and listening sessions where we allow people to voice their concerns and really talk about what's going on. And some of the issues that we have will affect, you know, the school closures that I'm hearing about, that's going to affect people in their commute, especially parents, children who, my daughter has been researching her middle school all year that she wants to go to. And if one of those schools, and I don't know how quickly the school closures are happening, but I could imagine if she did all this research and it's like, I'm going here because they have vend, and they have this, and then it gets shut down. So giving people the opportunity through the town hall, surveys, and listening sessions, I believe that's a great way.
Thank you. Question eight, please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Okay, well, I'm a parent, and I'm actively parenting younger children. My son is in third grade, my youngest, and I'm going to be here for a while. So it really is important to me what's going on and how things are going to continue to develop with all the changes that are going on. I am a writer, I'm an author. I love to be involved in my community, and I'm resilient. I love to come up with plans. I am a survivor, but more than that, I'm a thriver. So I get in there, and it's a, oh, okay, let's figure it out. You know, that is just who I am, and I feel like this is our home base now. We moved a lot. We had a tumultuous little time there in our life, but this was the goal, to get into the ABC School District, get in this area. I'm connected to my family, I'm connected to community, and I'm ready to work.
Thank you. Question nine, what are your ideas to improve the district?
Okay. I want to make sure that the families feel like they're involved. There's been, like, several things that, like, just letters that I've received as a parent, notices, and I'm like, okay, that's happening. So maybe some more free information before decisions are made. I would want families to feel like maybe they have, I don't know if it's a way to incorporate them in more of the voting process in some of the policies and for transparency with the school consolidations and what's going on. And I don't know how we can make families feel a part of the process, but that would be great. Secondly, I want to make sure that we're being very clear about where AI is going and how we would like to use that in schools. And I'm not scared of AI. I use AI, but I use it very carefully. And I want to make sure that we are not letting our children rely on it. And it'd be a tool, and teaching them how to let it be a tool instead of a crutch. So I would like us to do workshops on how to use AI, what's safe, and not just one, like, an ongoing, like, maybe we can make that a part of, like, an ongoing series that we can do for both the staff and the students. And I want to empower them with AI, not let them waste it. Like, you can really waste the opportunity that we have there because it's going to be here. It's a part of who we are now. So those are the ways I would like to vote and pray.
Thank you. Final question. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, teacher and staff considerations, state and federal law, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on an issue.
So I've mentioned it several times, the school consolidations. That has been the issue that I've been following and listening for because, like I said, I'm going to be here for a while. And if I were voting on a decision like school closures, I would first recognize how emotional it can be for the students, but also the staff and the families. And I would study the, you know, enrollment, budget impacts. I would study all the numbers, all the outcomes, like, as much as I'm able to do all of that. And I would, while I'm considering their emotions and everything, I know we have to make the decision that's best for the district. So I would stay rooted in wisdom and justice and making sure that we make the right decision to affect everyone. The final vote will balance that compassion, practicality, legality, and most importantly, what's truly best for our students' future. What will impact the students the most?
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you coming and being part of this process this morning. And so at this time, we will make our transition, and we will transition to candidate number three, Ms. Jeanne McHatten.
Good morning.
Just a second.
Thank you for being here today. We're going to transition to a set of questions. You'll have 20 minutes to answer, about two minutes per question. And so we'll start with question one. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? And what is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Just to clarify, I can refer to my notes. Is that all right? Okay, I've not been in an interview like that, so.
It's all right.
It's a little bit different. Okay, I see the basic role of the school board as making sure that all students receive the best education possible. And the school board plays a very crucial role in that. So they set policies and procedures, making sure that students receive a good education, that there's safe campuses, that there's, if there are suspensions or discipline issues, that's all very well spelled out. They hire the superintendent and evaluate her. So we're looking, of course, for a very good leader to lead the school district. The school board also looks at and approves the budget. They also approve curricular materials and make sure that they are approved according to the state's standards. The board also is responsible for being engaged with the community. We're really the ears of the community. We want to be out there listening to what parents and the community as a whole thinks are important issues in education. And if we're not servicing a certain group of students, we want to hear that. We want to make sure that we have equity and inclusion for all students, so those subgroups that we some- So those subgroups that we somehow, somehow miss sometimes, uh, in providing a good education for, we want to make sure that we, we see them. And, um, the school board's accountable and we need to be transparent in everything we do. All for the benefit of the best education for every student in the district.
Thank you. Question two, what are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? Which is your highest priority and why?
This was a really hard question for me because I went to the, um, ABC, um, State of the School luncheon with Gina and, um, she was so excited about every single school and, and what was important at every single school. It's, it's hard to bring the list down. So I'm gonna just highlight a few things that I think, um, are really important in the district. Lots of devoted employees, um, regardless whether they're certificated or classified, maintenance workers, uh, administration, everybody's, um, very devoted to their jobs. I love the working relationship with the unions, um, with the administration. I just think that's a super positive, um, thing in a district. The numerous specialized programs at the elementary schools, so all the academies at the different, um, elementary schools are very impressive. Uh, the remediation programs that are going on since COVID for, um, students in the elementary for, um, and I'm sure these occur at the, um, uh, middle school and high school also, but getting kids up to grade level. The after-school programs that also provide additional educational, um, exposure. Well-developed athletic programs. We have spectacular band programs from, um, elementary, middle school on up. We have numerous AP classes, um, offered at all the high schools. The, um, I love to see the, uh, career pathways that are becoming more and more popular at all of our schools. Um, the early college and the dual enrollment, I think are at like three out of the five schools at this point, three, uh, three out of the five high schools at this point. So I'd like to see that more developed, but I'm very proud of that. Um, activities coordinated with the community, like the Science Olympiad and the, um, the Track Meet, and then ABC Foundation and ABC Cares. Uh, PBIS and Avid, two great programs in the schools. Uh, mental health professionals that are present in the schools, English language counselors, reading by third grade, the migrant end programs, and I could go on and on and on. Even last night I was on Instagram and I'm like, I didn't know this, this program existed at FEDI, the Genius Program. So I just, I feel like I'm just like at the tip of the iceberg, just knowing, you know, I've got a general idea of the, of all the great programs, but I need to know more specifics.
Thank you. Question three, as a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role, both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
So as a trustee, I see, um, working together with the other board members to make sure that the governance of the district is, is appropriate. As an individual, I feel like you, uh, you're the eyes and ears of the district. So like what is actually going out, going on? And, um, just, just being out there, being willing to be at events. GAR would be, I know my only, my only school in my trustee area, um, but I certainly would, there are going, making my way down student bait, there's, there's other areas and I'd certainly want to reach out to those parents and know what their concerns were too. So I really feel like that's a major responsibility. So with, along with all the things I said for question one, like looking at policy and, and approving curriculum and approving the budget, budget and all that. I just feel like that there's two important things, that we work as a board together and that individually, we really find the strengths of the school district and, and let each other know those.
Thank you. Question four, what are the specifics, concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
Okay, well, they were kind of all, I talked to several people and they were kind of all over the place. So, um, my next door neighbor talked about phone use in the classroom. She's really concerned about phone use in the classroom. And she also feels like she has, shit, at this point, her son can turn everything in on the computer and she has not a clue whether that was a good thing or a bad thing. So, um, and I, I guess this is a mindset that we have to kind of get used to, that we're not gonna probably see our students work so much because it's assigned on a computer, they do work on the computer. I know when my grandson gets in the car after, I pick him up after school, I'm like, uh, do you have any homework? Uh, nope, I've turned it all in. There's no papers. So she was, my neighbor was concerned about that. I just, I think it's just, in, in reality, it's the way we're, we're moving towards. I, I, I heard that there would like, uh, people would like to hear more support for things like the bands versus athletics. Athletics gets a lot of, a lot of support, but maybe not so much for, for bands. So they'd like to get equal representation. From, um, some parents who are very concerned that their students aren't at grade level and they really want to know what are those programs that you've got during the school day, after school, that can get those students up to par. More English, uh, early college and dual enrollment programs. And then I also heard from a GATE parent who felt like, uh, we could expand the GATE, um, programs at the school. So kind of, kind of all over the place. But basically, basically very happy with the school district, just some little, some, just little tweaks.
Thank you. Question five, what do you, what would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
So if we were like at a board meeting and I felt like I, there was not complete information, I definitely would ask for more. Um, I'd ask for some clarification, um, documentation. I, I certainly wouldn't vote on anything. I would just say that I, I felt uncomfortable with voting. I want more, more information so that I have a very, very clear picture of, um, the proposal or the budget or whatever item happens to be. I'd want more information. And if that information came back and I still wasn't satisfied, I'd ask for more.
Thank you. Question six, describe your response if a parent were to corner you in the grocery store and ask you for your support on a particularly hot issue.
I would, um, tell that person that I would love to talk to them about that, but I really don't want to talk to them in the, in the market. Could I meet them for coffee? Ernie's done something, he's had some meetings at the district office to, um, to get people's input and I really like that idea. So I think I would set up some coffees at the district office and, um, hear from people, advertise to people in my trustee area and get their input. But, um, that way we can hear the pros and cons on, on her hot issue.
Thank you. Question seven, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for students, teachers, staff, parents, community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Um, as a trustee, I think you want to hear and the board in, in whole wants to hear comments and, um, the opinions of all people. So, um, the meetings are open and to public comments, so we do get public comment that way. Also advisory committees and councils exist and that's one way for people to, who are appointed to those committees. And I'm sure that those probably, I think those committees are open, so people can, and can also come and give their opinion. Community forums and, uh, listening sessions. So, um, kind of what happened, although it wasn't really effective, the town hall meetings that we had for the, um, the closing of schools. I mean, we did get, we, I, we got information, it may not have been at the right time, but, um, having, uh, forums where people can voice their opinions about, um, uh, issues that are, are very upfront in the district. We, we need to have a student representative on the board. And I think what you do, we do have student representatives who do come to the meetings. Just transparent communication, lots of, um, open communication, Instagram, Facebook, the website looks really good, just making sure that, um, that people are, all people are informed. So not even, so, um, even though I'm not a parent or a grandparent at this point, how do I get information about the school district?
Thank you.
And, um, and one thing I wanted to share, and I know this was, um, Scott's, um, I think this was Scott's idea that, um, about the ABC, um, um, Your Next Step Is As Easy As ABC. This is really, really catchy. Um, and, um, I, and I've seen it on several billboards and then I got it also, the postcard. But I like, it's so catchy that I wish we could do it for other programs other than adult school, because I think that it would really draw attention to some of the great things going on, going on in our schools. It's just a, uh, a catchy, a catchy little tune. And, um, I think if you saw it on a bus or on a billboard, it definitely would bring attention to the school district.
Thank you. Question eight, please summarize the strengths you would bring as a board, as a member of the board.
Well, my husband and I have lived in, um, ABC School District for 50 years. So obviously we love the district. We moved here because it was a di- a diverse, um, school district. And, um, we've loved it ever since, we have not moved. Um, our, our kids went through here and our grandkids are going through here, going through the school district. I, hang on, I gotta go back to the question.
What do you, summarize the strengths you bring.
Oh, strengths, okay. I also have been in, in, involved in education all my life. I hate to say that, uh, that going back to like 1967, when I started out as a teacher's aide in Long Beach, uh, and then becoming a teacher in Norah Lamorada, uh, going from there to Paramount to be an assistant principal and to Whittier City to be a principal, um, and to Whittier Union to be the director of curriculum. So I've had lots of experience and, um, I retired in, um, in 2011 or 2010, 2010, and immediately, um, went to work for, um, for Whittier College as their director of student teaching. So all that to say, I love education, I love kids. I now work for Cal State Long Beach, um, and for Cal Poly, um, supervising their student teachers and teaching a class. And so education has been my whole career. I obviously care, so it's my background. I feel like, I feel like in the next year, ABC is gonna, um, have some difficult decisions to make, um, ma- maybe merging schools. Um, and I think that my background would be very helpful.
Thank you. Question nine, what are your ideas to improve the district?
I would say, um, I think the district is definitely moving in the right direction. I would go back to maybe advertising, like I said, a little bit more out there. I would like to see some more programs with the city, some co- cooperation with the city. Maybe perhaps we can use each other's facilities. I like, I very much like the CTE programs with the, with the community colleges, seeing more and more of that. I did meet with the principal at, um, GAR this week, um, Dr. Moore, and he was so excited about the CTE pathways. And I, I just, I felt like, wow, okay. If all the, if all the high school principals are that enthusiastic about those pathways, it'll, it's great. And I think maybe we need to, I think some of the middle schools also have those pathways so they can feed right into the high school pathways. And then they've got a jump right into college makes total sense to me. So I think, um, continuing to add those is, is a big step. And then, um, just being as a board, be, uh, out there at events and, and, um, be, I just, I feel like I'm, like I said before, I'm just at the, at the tip of the iceberg of knowing about what's, all the things that are going on in the district. And, um, that would definitely be one of my goals, to make sure that I really know what's happening all over, so I can talk intelligently about that.
Thank you. Last question, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, teacher and staff considerations, state and federal law, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Okay, so, um, back in May, the facilities committee came to the board and said that, through a lot of anguish and emotion, they were not, they were recommending that no, no schools be closed. And so, um, it, that, having been on that committee for, for part of the time, it was very emotional. We looked at data, but, but it wasn't, um, it was hard to tell the direction exactly we were going. And so, uh, that's what happened in May. Come November, the board recommended that they hire an outside agency called Schoolworks and have that, um, pers- that agency really look at the data, um, from an outside source. So going back to the first committee, the facilities, I think people, I think people had heard that there might be school closures, but you know, they, they kind of pushed it off to the side and that kind of brought it to reality. Okay, so this is like something that probably is really going to happen. And so all those emotions came out. Having somebody come from the outside is, is a different kind of view, um, because that person doesn't have a tie into the district, right? They're gonna come with a, a much more, um, middle of the road, here's what I found, here's the, here's the data that I looked at, here's what I found, this is what I'm gonna recommend. I think people can live with that much more easily, coming from an outside agency than from, from people in the community trying to make suggestions. The results may be the same. I think that it's not going forward. Um, if, if, if the board decides that they are going to go with the recommendations of that gentleman, the consultant, um, it's not gonna be an easy, it's still not gonna be easy, it's gonna be hard. Uh, when I talked to Mr. Gere, the president of the Teachers Union, you know, he said that there's, he's, they're already talking about a MO of understanding going forward. When I talked to Twan, he's talking about, I said, what about things like, okay, how are teachers gonna, how's that gonna, how, how is that gonna look like? If you're a teacher at a school and you're the oldest, you're the, you've been the teacher there the longest, you get first choice of where you're gonna go. There's a lot of, a lot of little things that could, that are gonna have to be ironed out. It's, it's gonna be a difficult decision. So going back to the question and, um, let me make sure I covered everything. I think that it's really important for the board not to, to, uh, let me rephrase, rephrase that. I think it's really important for the board to look at how, if they decide to, to merge schools, that you look at the positives at what's going on in the district right now and how you can merge those things together to make it a stronger, a stronger school district. Looking at maybe the configuration of a six, seven, eight, uh, because we've got the TK that we now have at every school and, and, and even younger ones coming in. So you're, you're gonna have community concerns, you're gonna have student concerns, you're gonna have teacher concerns, you're gonna have staff concerns, you're gonna have state and federal law that you have to follow, and we're gonna have to consider all those things when making that decision.
It's okay. Is that, you can finish.
I, I did, I did.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we appreciate your time today and letting us hear from you and what you have to say about just the questions and the topics that relate to our school districts. So thank you for being part today.
Thank you for your time.
At this time, we will begin our transition to candidate number four, Mr. Themarax. We'll get started in just a moment. Thank you for being here today. So we'll walk through the set of questions and, um, you'll have about two minutes to answer each one. And you'll have about two minutes to answer each one. We'll have 20 minutes total. And so, we'll begin with our first question. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
To make sure I keep within the time limit, I will answer based on my notes. Public schools are meant to provide every student the opportunity to learn, grow, and develop into capable, responsible citizens. Regardless of their background, their role is foundational to building strong and informed society. The board's responsibility is to ensure the district stays on mission by setting clear direction, supporting leadership, and overseeing decisions that keep the students and teachers at the center. Trustees are here to represent the community, maintain accountability, and help create an environment where academic success is expected and supported. We need to remember that we are raising future adults and not just children.
Thank you. What are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? What is your highest priority and why?
I am proud of the ABC longstanding academic strength. I'm a product of ABC Unified District. And so, I'm pretty proud to be within this district myself. And my top priority will be to gain a better understanding on how each school functions on a day-to-day basis, the inner workings of it. And what is working, what is not, and how we can help raise standards across the district. That means by doing a lot of listening and learning from all sides, not just the staff and administrators, but also parents and students. I want to help make ABCUSD an even more desirable than it already is as a district for families to bring their children into. And I mean, Whitney High School is number two in the state. It wouldn't be the worst idea to try to move, to move all the rest of the schools up a notch.
Thank you. Question three, as a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
My role as a trustee is to help shape the direction of the district and ensure decisions support the student's success. Also being fiscally responsible and reflect the values of our community. As an individual, I'll do my best to talk to as many families as I can in my trustee area and be able to bring those issues to the board and help improve the overall situation in the district.
Thank you. Question four, what are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
So since this role was opened up not too long ago, I haven't had a whole lot of time to speak with many parents in the district, but I fully intend to. That's something I take seriously because listening to families is essential to understanding what is really happening on the ground. From what I have observed and heard in a broader community setting, there's a strong interest in raising academic performance across all schools. Making sure students are well-prepared for college and careers. And ensuring that support systems, whether it's academic or behavioral, are accessible and effective. There's also concerns for students who are falling behind due to the schools' closing during COVID-19. So some of the parents did voice that to me, that they worry if their kids will ever be able to caught up. And as a board member, I will prioritize ongoing conversation with parents, students, and school staff to better understand their concerns and how the district can respond to them.
Thank you. Question five, what would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
Yeah, I would respectfully ask more questions and follow up as needed to make sure I fully understand the situation. That's one thing about me, I ask a lot of questions. And getting to the heart of the issue is essential, especially when decisions have long-term implications. I believe it is the board's responsibility to pursue clarity, even if it takes extra time. Because the trust the community plays on us depends on us making informed decisions based on facts.
Thank you. Question six, describe your response if a parent were to corner you in the grocery store and ask you to support a particularly hot issue.
I'd respectfully listen and thank them for sharing their perspective. Then I'll encourage them to voice their opinion through the proper channels like public comments or written input. So that it's part of the official record. That's a more effective way to ensure their voice reaches all board members and becomes a part of a formal conversation.
Thank you. Question seven, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for students, teachers, staff, parents, community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
There's always the, your typical input formats such as public comments, written feedback, surveys, and community forums. But I think we need to go above and beyond that. And we need to think of more creative ways so we can reach people who don't typically speak up. There's always different kinds of parents out there and people out there. Some people like the public forum, some don't. And they don't, they don't want to be the one that's always raising their hand, making loud noises. So we can try to attempt to do that by doing more outreach events, school visits even, or targeted surveys. So that it's not always the squeakiest wheel that gets the oil, if you get what I'm saying. A good decision comes from understanding the full range of perspectives, not just responding to whomever makes the most noise.
Thank you. Question eight, please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
So I bring a combination of professional and community experience. I believe I'll serve the board well. My background is in the hospitality industry. I managed resorts and hotels for the past about 15 years or so. And so, through that experience, I'm able to resolve conflicts calmly, navigate high-pressure situations with professionalism. Hospitality teaches you to serve others without losing focus on standards and results. I've also spent the past three years in startups. My startup experience sharpened my ability to work across multiple teams, collaborate with different departments, and solve problems quickly. In a startup environment, you have to make decisions efficiently, but always based on the best available data. You also have to be willing to pivot if something isn't working, a mindset I would bring to the board. Through my nonprofit work at ABC Education Foundation, Surdo's Optimist Club, I've stayed grounded in service to the community, especially in supporting students and families of the district. Together, these experiences have shaped me into someone who is collaborative, responsive, data-driven, and committed to practical results.
Thank you. Question nine, what are your ideas to improve the district?
Before offering solutions, I would like to get a better understanding of the challenges the district is currently facing. Whether at school-site level within administrations or among families. From there, I work to collaborate with all involved teachers, staff, parents, and students to figure out the best way to move forward in a way that is practical and truly impactful. I believe good decision comes from understanding of the full picture and working together to improve outcomes where they are needed the most.
Thank you. Question 10, our final question. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about. And describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, teacher and staff considerations, state and federal law, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Taking a page out of my startup experience, I don't really have strong personal feelings about any past board decisions. Because I understand that every decision is made based on information available at the time. There's no way for any of us to go back and decide on the same issue differently. But there is value in learning and adapting. As a board member, I would weigh each decision based on what is best, what best supports students' learning, respect the work of our staff, reflects the community's value, and follows the law. If I later, if I later find out that a decision is no longer aligned with our mission or is producing unintended consequences, I'd be willing to pivot and course correct. Staying committed to the mission, not just the position. It is what I believe will ultimately serve the district best.
Thank you so much, Mr. Themmerachs. We appreciate your time. And just hearing from you today, your thoughts on the questions for this position.
Thank you for the opportunity.
At this time, we will transition to candidate number five.
Mr. President, can I request a bathroom break? We've had four candidates.
Yes, that's fine.
I don't wanna miss any answers.
We won't start with you.
Thank you.
But we will transition, our next candidate will be Mr. Mel Cortez.
Thank you.
Candidate five, Mr. Mel Cortez. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Thank you for being here and participating today. We'll go through the set of questions and we'll ask them in order. And we'll have 20 minutes for you to respond, a couple minutes for each question. And so, we're glad you're here. We'll begin with the first question. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? And what is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
The role of public schools is to provide free education to every child. Regardless of their socioeconomic background, their ability to pay. And give equal opportunity to every child. The role as the board is to set policy to make sure that state and federal laws are followed. And approve budgets, but to make sure that the budgets are approved based on the schools and the students' needs. And when I talk, when I see all of you up there, and this role that you provide is that no child is left behind, the main role of the school board.
Thank you. Question two, what are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? And what is your highest priority and why?
I'm proud of this district's performing academic performance. It's great to hear different names of schools and the ABC School District all over the nation, high-performing schools. Diversity and multichronism, it's great. The diversity in the district is almost second to none. We're lucky to have such multiculturalism.
Thank you. Question six, describe your response if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot issue.
I would just listen to the parent, keep shopping, and ask, give him my card and ask him to make an appointment with me, if, so I could be a better listener, and also invite him to the board meetings to speak during public comments, so we could not just one person listen, but all the board members be able to hear what they had to say.
Thank you. Question seven, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for students, teachers, staff, parents, community members, to express their diverse range of views to inform the board deliberations on important policy issues?
We have to interact with everyone. I think the most important part of the board members, listen to every group from the district, parents, community, students, teachers, staff, listen to their needs. Visit schools to make sure that we get to listen to them. We have town hall meetings, invite people from different places to come and ask questions during public comments, invite people to public comments and listen to what they had to say. Go to teacher meetings and make sure that we get invited so they could, to listen to their needs. Even city council meetings from the cities that are part of the district, to see what else is going on in the community, because it's important for us to know what else is going on, because we work as, we're partners.
Thank you. Question eight, please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
I think I could bring people together. I have done, brought people together in the past in many occasions, um, the city of Sarido's for different reasons, especially crime. I know the community in this, not just Sarido's, also Norwark, of all, Norwark, of all, Hawaiian Gardens and Lakewood. I'll make sure that, I know what goes on, on another different cities in the community. I believe people, as strong as people trust me. When people ask me to, to help or have questions, I'm able to follow up, and I'm able to help people. If I don't know the answer, I know where to find the answer. I was part of the Legislative Policy Committee here at the district for a few years, and, and I saw that that's one very important part of being a board member, knowing the policies and from the district, how to find, how to do things, the thing that the documents that tells the process of how to follow, how to do things in the district. I work with the school unions, also work with the parenting groups. I led, have led workshops with parents. So I'm a person that could work with any group with a smile and be able to listen. And that's one strength that I have. And being able to follow up with the experience I have also in schools. I taught elementary school, I taught middle school, and I taught a high school. So I have experience on all the three, all levels of the school sites, and that's one strength, to be able to put myself in the shoes of the parents and the teachers and students.
Thank you. Question number nine, what are your ideas to improve the district?
I want to see ABC Unified School District be the leader in AI. I don't want ABC to be a follower. So AI, people use AI everywhere right now at work. And we want to make sure, maybe set a committee or a task force, how can ABC use AI to help teachers plan, to help students learn, not just AI write my essay, but AI as a learning tool. Because that, that's the future. We cannot ignore, we cannot ignore artificial intelligence. So that's one thing that I would like to see, how can we use that as a learning tool? I want to see electives in coding, maybe since middle school, high school, and some of these classes, there are students that could graduate from high school and start earning six-figure salaries right after high school if they learned coding in high school. Also, I want to improve the schools, so parents don't have to rely on school of choice for, when they're enrolling their kids in school. I want to make sure that that improves. Work with the cities and partners, as partners. And an idea to work with cities is because I know that enrollment is declining, I know that's the one, a big issue, and every city has a housing element, the future housing. And future housing is going to bring more students to the district. I know Norwark has, has planned like 209 homes by Alondra and Maeston. There's new, new homes coming near Nimes Elementary also. Burbank and Artisha, there's some apartments that bring students. So I want to make sure that we know where the homes are being built, to make sure what the future's going to look like also. And work with cities to make sure that there's plans, let's help out and make sure that the homes are built. I want to see the social media use, sell the schools. Social media use by schools, not just by the district, but the schools, to sell the schools, to, to show the best that every school is doing. And not just, you, not just provided by staff or adults, students could be also part of this, because teach them the best uses of social media. If we do something great at the school site, don't just put it on the ABC websites or social media. Make sure that the schools provide that to their, to their neighborhood and to the people that follow. That's how we're going to attract more parents and students to, to the schools. Also, the websites at the school, I want to see, I'm not 100% sure only adults work on it, but I want to see a class like the newspaper. The website, where the students actually work on the website, learn how to write websites, how to, how to make websites, but at the same time, run the school's website, make sure that they learn how to do that. That's something that could also help students get a six-figure job right after high school. And one thing that I want to, not improve, but one thing I, I want to see is a, an alumni Hall of Fame. Here, one of the walls, there's a national elected officials, athletes, that, that were part of this great district, and it would be great to have a Hall of Fame somewhere in the district to, to make sure I was followed, Marcelo Valbuena, that went to Sarido's High School, and he was in the World Cup. So that's one of the things I, one of the few things I want to see the district improve.
Thank you. Final question today, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about, and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, teacher and staff considerations, state and federal law, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
One of the recent board decisions, or maybe not decision yet, is student enrollment and school consolidation. That's probably going to be the biggest vote any school member ever takes when deciding on school consolidations and how to improve student enrollment. I know the last time the report was made to the board was in May, and there was talk about this also in October, but it needs to be brought back, because the way these decisions are made, the students keep, the district keeps losing about 500 students a year. In about five years, it'll be about 15,000. That's allow teachers and staff members that won't, that won't be here anymore. And that's also less, I don't know, about $56 million less, that's programs that the schools have right now, that they won't have in five years. So that's one thing that we need to work on, and this, this white elephant that keeps coming back to the district, and how we're going to make sure that decisions are made. Listen to the community. Have meetings as a committee, I think it was talked about having another committee. And don't just meet here, meet at different school sites, so the community could be part of the process. Invite different groups to, to this process. Talk to students, including elementary school students, because this decision includes mostly, includes elementary school. And it, where if anything happens eventually in this decision, you have to listen to students, because it could affect them mentally if they had to move from one school to another, from one year to the next. So listen to what they have to say, teachers, the staffs that will have to move, be moved, and if consolidate, if it consolidates. So there's a lot of different groups and people, these are good examples of listening and penetration to what everybody has to say. And then follow state law with Assembly Bill 1912, to make sure that we follow what the law says. And I'm glad that schools were not consolidated, consolidated last year, because we need more time. Find through these groups, federal law, maybe there's someone that has a great idea to make sure that schools are not consolidated, consolidated, that schools are not affected. Maybe there's a different way to do this. Trustee area five only has Car High School in the area, but it fits into at least two schools, Willow and Aloha, that are on the, on the list of maybe consolidating, consolidating, and those parties are worried. So I listened to some of those parties, what they had to say, and they want to make sure it doesn't happen, but whatever happens, that's one way to make a big decision. My personal values and beliefs, we probably have no determination on this if I had to follow state law to save money, but the parties are the ones that are going to determine my values, the students and the teachers. So that's one of the decisions that will have to be made soon.
Thank you so much for your time today and for sharing your thoughts on all of these questions. We really appreciate you being part of the process.
Thank you. That was 20 minutes, felt like three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will transition to candidate number six, Ms. Lawrence. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Of course.
And so, we'll go through a process, we'll ask each of the questions for you. You'll have 20 minutes total, but a couple of minutes per question. So we'll just get started with question one. Please share with us what you see as the basic purpose of public schools.
Make sure that the schools provide that to their neighborhood and to the people that follow. That's how we're going to attract more parents and students to the schools. Also, the websites at the school, I want to see. I'm not 100% sure only adults work on it, but I want to see a class like the newspaper. The website where the students actually work on the website, learn how to write websites, how to make websites, but at the same time run the school's website. Make sure that they learn how to do that. That's something that could also help students get a six-figure job right after high school. And one thing that I want to, not improve, but one thing I want to see is an alumni Hall of Fame. Here, one of the walls, there's national elected officials, athletes that were part of this great district. And it would be great to have a Hall of Fame somewhere in the district to make sure. I was followed by Marcelo Valbuena that went to Cerritos High School and he was in the World Cup. So that's one of the things, one of the few things I want to see the district improve.
Thank you. Final question today. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, teacher and staff considerations, state and federal law, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
One of the recent board decisions, or maybe not decision yet, is student enrollment and school consolidation. That's probably going to be the biggest vote any school member ever takes when deciding on school consolidations and how to improve student enrollment. I know the last time the report was made to the board was in May and there was talk about this also in October, but it needs to be brought back because the way these decisions are made, the students keep, the district keeps losing about 500 students a year. In about five years, it'll be about 15,000. That's allow teachers and staff members that won't be here anymore. And that's also less, I don't know, about $56 million less. That's programs that the schools have right now that they won't have in five years. So that's one thing that we need to work on. And this, this white elephant that keeps coming back to the district. And how we're going to make sure that decisions are made. Listen to the community. Have meetings as a committee. I think it was talked about having another committee. And don't just meet here. Meet at different school sites so the community could be part of the process. Invite different groups to this process. Talk to students. Include elementary school students because this decision includes mostly, includes elementary school. And when if anything happens eventually in this decision, you have to listen to students because it could affect them mentally if they had to move from one school to another, from one year to the next. So listen to what they have to say, teachers, the staff that will have to move, be moved and if consolidate, if it consolidates. So there's a lot of different groups and people. These are good examples of listening and penetration to whatever they have to say. And then follow state law with Assembly Bill 1912 to make sure that we follow what the law says. And I'm glad that schools were not consolidated last year because we need more time. Find through these groups, federal law, maybe there's someone that has a great idea to make sure that schools are not consolidated, that schools are not affected. Maybe there's a different way to do this. Trusty area five only has Car High School in the area, but it fits into at least two schools, Willow and Aloha, that are on the list of maybe consolidating. And those parties are worried. So I listened to some of those parties, what they had to say, and they want to make sure it doesn't happen. But whatever happens, that's one way to make a big decision. My personal values and beliefs, we probably have no determination on this if I had to follow state law to save money, but the parents are the ones that are going to determine my values, the students and the teachers. So that's one of the decisions that will have to be made soon.
Thank you so much for your time today and for sharing your thoughts on all of these questions. We really appreciate you being part of the process.
Thank you. That was 20 minutes, felt like three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will transition to candidate number six, Ms. Lawrence.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for being here with us.
Of course.
And so we'll go through a process. We'll ask each of the questions for you. You'll have 20 minutes total, but a couple of minutes per question. So we'll just get started with question one. Please share with us what you see as the basic purpose of public schools and what the role of the Board of Trustees is in the fulfillment of that purpose.
Got it. Well, like I put in my application, I feel like public schools serve two main functions. There's a social function and an individual function. The general population having free education benefits obviously benefits everyone in society. This isn't something we can quantify always. Sometimes these social benefits are less, you know, they're more of the humanistic side, but I really do believe down to the ground that the schools need to be a place where the community comes together and feels more like a unified community as opposed to just a place where people go to get services, right? And that can just increase cohesion and pretty much everything about the community improves if that is what the school, one of the purposes the school serves. Individually, as an educator, I hope that public schools also provide a place where students can develop and explore and begin to understand who they are, set themselves up for future opportunities. And I mean this both in the idealistic and in the more practical pragmatic kind of way. Career-oriented and internships are fantastic, but all students need to become critical thinkers so they themselves can understand their world and make sense of their world as they move through it because we don't know what it's going to be like 10 years from now. We certainly didn't imagine everything 10 years ago, right? How the school board fits in and how the trustees fit in is a little bit of a trickier question. You all operate on sort of a different level. I'm used to operating one-on-one with students and you guys are operating on a more organizational level. I think the board, in my experience with the board in my own district, provides infrastructure for serving the needs of each site. And the school board provides a venue for the wider community to be involved in the work of the district as well. Each school site has its own challenges, obviously, and they have to be sort of dealt with at that level, I think. But the board should essentially make it a less, a process with less friction so that they can meet those needs, I would imagine. Making sure that resources are distributed and there are structural elements or procedures that district administrators, staff, teachers, community members can all use to make sure that their voices are heard. And that seems to me to be sort of a key function of the school board.
Thank you. Question two. What are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? And what will your greatest, highest priority be and why?
Well, I lived, have lived in this area for over 40 years. Went off to college for a few years, of course, but ABC, I've always known, has a lot of strengths. I think that it's small enough to be fairly responsive, but it has a lot of resources within that small size, not the least of which being the diversity of the community that it serves. I would also say that the district's openness to bringing in outside talent is a real benefit to the district. That's something that I think every district should really be open to bringing in outside talent to get fresh ideas and perspectives. I also think that ABC has a reputation for offering students a lot of opportunities for scholarship and career-oriented programs. I think that educators in the district have the opportunity to be innovative in ways that they can't necessarily be in other places, from my experience and understanding. There's certainly some site-specific issues, chronic absenteeism, English learner communities. If you look at the California dashboard, those are clearly things that we could improve on. Big picture, ABC faces problems and situations that are similar to other districts in some ways. The future is the biggest issue, obviously. The reality is of future enrollment and looking at how our resources are distributed in terms of falling enrollment. I am, like I said, an educator. Falling enrollment is affecting all educators. And so understanding how to deal with that while making sure everybody has a voice in whatever happens with that is going to be really one of the, probably the highest priority, honestly, because it affects everyone.
Thank you. Question three. As a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role, both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
Well, I would start off by saying, first of all, my own opinions on any particular topic are frankly not that relevant. Obviously, they will guide what I tend to see and look at and will shape what I focus on. But my main purpose is to represent the needs and concerns for my area. I mean, I can't imagine it would be any other way. And in that, I would need to work with staff, superintendent, teachers, community members to make sure that the decisions are made and implemented with the capacity of the district and make sure we're using our resources fully to serve those people. So I think that's pretty much the purpose.
Thank you. Question four. What are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
Well, I spoke a little bit previously about concerns about chronic absenteeism. Certainly also, if you're looking at, I was surprised to see that particularly in NEMES, we would probably benefit from an ELA specialist as well as math specialists across the board or in many places in the district, we would probably benefit from some math specialists. I also think that in certain schools, maybe a little bit of a focus also on a sense of belonging and an idea that that social emotional component creates more unity on the campuses themselves and so sort of having that cohesiveness. Yeah, I think that's my answer there.
Thank you. Question five. What would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
This is a very interesting question. One of the things I would probably, or how I would approach this particular scenario, is is the inaccuracy deliberate or a result of being misinformed? Or just a result of different perspectives? Because if I think it's inaccurate or not complete, that's not necessarily the fault of the person telling me whatever it is, right? So I would probably think if I'm not, if I feel like I'm not getting a complete picture, whose perspective am I getting? And how can I get more variety of perspectives on the situation? It's been my experience that perspective is limited by vision and curiosity. If people don't ask questions about the situation or themselves, they're not going to uncover the real reasons for whatever's happening in the particular context or situation. So you really have to investigate why you're being told what you're being told and not just assume that the person is being disingenuous necessarily. There are always other stakeholders to learn from and there's no one story to anything.
Thank you. Question six. Describe your response if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot issue.
I'm going to be honest with you. I'm very single-minded in the grocery store, but I will take this scenario as it comes. I will tell you this. I work at Long Beach Poly and I work with very invested community members. And my first priority is to make sure that people feel listened to, particularly if they're upset. If you can allow people to feel heard and actually listen, but also make them feel heard, that can really help to turn down the heat somewhat. I would probably then suggest, well, I would be sympathetic, probably non-committal, but sympathetic, and inform them at the next board meeting and probably also the process for public comment and involvement. And if they were even more persistent, I would suggest that the decision is not going to be made in the grocery aisle. And it certainly wouldn't just be made by me because clearly we have a variety of people up here would also be involved in the decision-making. So I would, again, encourage them to come and make a public comment.
Thank you. Question seven. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for students, teachers, staff, parents, community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
So I've already told you and you already know from my application that I teach. The subject that I teach is AP Research. And in research, one of the key components is understanding that there's not two sides to anything. There are 12 sides. And really just acknowledging that the effect, the board members, they have to ask questions and see connections between influences that might not be readily apparent. So having that curiosity, asking those questions. And I think the most critical thing is diversifying the streams of information you're getting. Making sure that everyone has had the opportunity to be heard. Also, if some, if some group is not being heard, it is very likely that that group feels some kind of barrier to being, to coming to the table. So figuring out what that is. If parents aren't comfortable coming to school meetings, why is that? Are they not comfortable being on campus for whatever reason? We need to make sure that we've removed as many barriers as possible to people being involved so we get those diverse streams of information if, for instance, we're not hearing from a particular quarter. I would also say student involvement is critical because if the student's involved, it's more likely their parents are going to be involved. And also, if one student involved, probably their friends and their siblings will be involved. That will all help any kind of deliberation because when you're hearing from the students, you're hearing from the community we're supposed to be serving at the bottom of this, right? I mean, that's who we're all here for. Yes.
Thank you. Question eight. Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
All right. So I'll say just as the, to set this, you know, to let you know sort of how I think about this. I feel very strongly about things, but I tend to deliberate very slowly. And I think that that is something I've had to learn as you age. You know, you don't make decisions on the fly. You really want to deliberate. My family is in education. My parents were both elementary school educators for LA and Compton, respectively. My husband works transparently for ABC. And I have a number of other educators in my family. I've worked as a high school teacher for 22 years at Long Beach Poly High School. I started out as an English teacher, teaching 10th grade English in 2014. I, there was an opportunity to teach AP Capstone. There were less than 100 schools in the country that were even being offered this opportunity. I jumped in with absolutely both feet. And in our district, next year, we will be replacing the honors 10th grade with AP Capstone. And so when we're thinking about like my involvement with that, right now, I'm involved with my own district, but I'm also been involved with ABC in their own rollout of the AP Capstone program. I do not know. I think actually you guys are implementing it in 10th grade or 11th. That's something I've been really involved with. I've also served on a WASC committee and ran the entire WASC process for a school of over 4,000 students as well as staff of over 200. So, and I was in charge of that entire process for the 2018 WASC of Long Beach Poly High School. That level of involvement as well as leadership in terms of being department head. I was pathway lead of PACE for a good few years. And honestly, I'm working with the pathway lead to kind of make sure that everything continues to go right. This includes interviewing for teaching positions, curriculum and course of study, recruitment for the schools and school of choice, as well as working with teachers in the pathway to make sure that their voices and needs were met. Additionally, I've served on site council for Long Beach Poly. It's limited to two years, so I served on there for two years. I would also say that I have, as I said before, been in the area for four decades. I think that we have an enormous amount of resources, cultural resources. Money is one thing, but the cultural resources can't be bought. And I think that we don't always leverage those as, maybe as often as we should. But I do think that a focus on that, that would be part of my focus.
Thank you. Question nine. What are your ideas to improve the district?
I already think it's a really great district, to be honest with you. So, but I will say, just as I said in the beginning, we need to consolidate some resources so that the uncertainty of the future, we can manage with a little bit more steadiness, I'd say, for our community. And that would be to accommodate the probably obvious falling enrollment that we'll be dealing with. I also think student advisory for the board would be appropriate. We have that in Long Beach. It is not an uncommon thing. I would love it if students were more involved in the board and not just as somebody to lead the pledge, right? Really to have them involved and their voice and agency involved with the board. I also think that connections, as I mentioned before, within the community, cultural resources in Cerritos are just unmatched. We have a tremendously, for such a small district, we have a tremendous diversity. So they should be, these should be leveraged as well as community resources. The Cerritos Library, the Cerritos Arts Center. I think between campuses as well. Connection between campuses, developing identity within the campus, but also between the campuses. There's a Code Jam where Whitney and Cerritos, they collaborate, but more, there should be more of that and there should be more collaboration between the schools. I would also say, Cerritos as a city and the area, even outside the bounds of Cerritos, we have businesses that could easily also be brought on board to help our students see opportunities and see where they would like to go, like post-graduation. And so all of those things, I think, more connection, that would be very helpful as well.
Thank you. Final question today for you. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, teacher and staff considerations, state and federal law, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
That is a lot. There's a lot of people and institutions in there. I think that one of the things I saw was the externships for the ABC Adult School that you guys talked about in December. I really loved that. I, particularly for that, for that community and serving that segment of our community, bringing industry into the process at that level is fantastic. I also was looking at your work with bringing the ethnic studies into fruition at ABC. So this is obviously a state law. In LBUSD, we have given the students opportunity to take these courses before it was a state law. And I'm just going to say the student interest and growth was phenomenal. They were invested beyond and affected the rest of their classes. I saw it as a classroom teacher. So when you're thinking about implementing this, I know there was some discussion about it, but it can absolutely serve the community, particularly when it is driven by the community and driven to serve the community and fit the community. I know you guys are implementing it in your history classes at this point, and I think it's fantastic. I think leveraging, as I said before, the community to help support that would be, would be great. I know teacher and staff considerations are involved in that, but I also think bringing people outside of history would also probably be a good idea. Looking at it, these, the ethnic studies as like a whole component, including the arts and including language, all of these things would be a real benefit. But I know, I know you guys were working with what you had, trying to implement it, just the ethnic studies classes it was.
Thank you.
No problem.
We appreciate your time and just sharing your thoughts and
Of course.
feedback on the questions. Thank you for being part of today.
Of course, thank you.
At this time, we're going to transition to our final candidate, number seven, and that's Ms. Maria Vegas. that's Ms. Maria Vegas. It'll be just a minute.
Thank you so much for being here today with us. We appreciate your time. We'll go through the set of questions with you. I'll ask each question. We'll have a 20 minutes, couple minutes for each question. But we'll have you just start today with what you see as the basic purpose of public schools and what you believe the role of the Board of Trustees is in the fulfillment of that purpose.
Great. Thank you for having me. I believe the basic purpose of public schools is to produce well-prepared and well-adjusted individuals that will go on to lead productive lives. This obviously would include students who will pursue college admissions, but it'll, it also is students that are ready to enter the workforce.
Thank you. Question two, what are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? Which is your highest priority and why?
I'm very proud of the academic achievements and high expectations of the district. I'm also very proud of the caring staff and the great facilities that the district provides. As a board member, I would like to continue to support the district's initiatives and efforts in advancing academic and mental health initiatives. I think my highest priority is academic achievement, and the reason for that is because I feel that students need to be well-prepared for whatever goals they have in life after high school.
Thank you. Question three, as a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role, both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
So my primary purpose would be to ensure students have the opportunities and resources they need, also to support families, schools, and staff. I would fulfill that role by being well-informed and making decisions based on the best interest of the students and the community that we serve.
Thank you. Question four, what are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
So, one of the main concerns I feel in my community is budget deficits. And budget deficits are always a concern because it affects every aspect of the school. Budget deficits affect programs, safety, resources available to students. And for that reason, students, students' academic achievement suffers and, and the opportunities to, to offer students and the family supports also suffer.
Thank you. Question five, what would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
I would definitely ask for additional information. I would ask for clarification. On my own, I would also do additional research to ensure that whatever decisions I make would be made with the most complete information.
Thank you. Question six, describe your response if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot issue.
I would definitely listen to their concern or their hot issue topic. I would ask them for additional information. I would get, I would let them know that I would get back to them once I researched more on the topic. I would not commit support until I had all the information needed to make a, to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Question seven, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for students, teachers, staff, parents, and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
So the first thing I feel it would be to, the board members have to make themselves available to the people that they serve and represent. They have to be open to, to feedback and considering, and consider differing points of view. This can be achieved by being present at events, community meetings, that would be school events, community meetings, also by active listening at, at public comments such as this board, at this board meeting.
Thank you. Question number eight, please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Well, I have almost 30 years of experience in education. I started in, I started as a teacher's assistant and then moved on to teaching. Then I became a school counselor and now I'm, I'm a school administrator. Along the way, I have also served in different committees. I have, I have been in support roles at school sites, supporting E.L. students, special education students. And so I feel that these 30 years, and time flies because I'm here, these 30 years have allowed me to gather a lot of information that I would use here if I was appointed to this board.
Thank you. Question number nine, what are your ideas to improve the district?
So with decreasing enrollments, I would like to make the, the district more appealing to more families. And what I would, how I would make it more appealing is I would like to see more offerings of, more academic offerings such as dual-language programs, early college programs, and CTE pathways for students. Additionally, it would be awesome if we could have some more after-school programs at our schools. I think, I think that when parents and students are choosing where to go to school, these are the, these are the kind of programs and opportunities that they, they want for their children.
Thank you. Our final question today for you. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, teacher and staff considerations, state and federal law, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
So, I know that a big concern right now is the budget shortfalls that are projected in the incoming years. I was very glad that the board was proactive in forming a committee and holding town hall meetings to gather community feedback and possible, about the possible school consolidation. To decide how I would vote on something like this, there would be, there would be so many considerations that I would have to take into account. Because it affects not only the, the, the school community, but also the surrounding communities. So in, in order to determine my vote, I would use the findings of the committee, but also take into account community and student needs in order to make a decision.
Thank you. We really appreciate your time today and being willing to share with us your thoughts and feedback on the questions we have. At this time, we are going to transition and have a 10-minute break, and then we will come back for board discussion prior to voting. Thank you. members can buzz in when they are ready to share, and each will have five minutes to share their thoughts. And then after that, we will transition to a time of voting on each and every candidate. Board member Tatiana Yokoyama-Bui. At this time, we're going to move into a time for board discussion. Each of our board members can buzz in when they are ready to share, and each will have five minutes to share their thoughts. And then after that, we will transition to a time of voting on each and every candidate. Board member Tatiana Yokoyama-Bui. At this time, we're going to move into a time for board discussion. Each of our board members can buzz in when they are ready to share, and each will have five minutes to share their thoughts. And then after that, we will transition to a time of voting on each and every candidate. Board member Tatiana Yokoyama-Bui. At this time, we're going to move into a time for board discussion. Each of our board members can buzz in when they are ready to share, and each will have five minutes to share their thoughts. And then after that, we will transition to a time of voting on each and every candidate. At this time, we're going to move into a time for board discussion. Each of our board members can buzz in when they are ready to share, and each will have five minutes to share their thoughts. And then after that, we will transition to a time of voting on each and every candidate. Board member Tatiana Yokoyama-Bui.
Thank you, President Nishi. I would like to commend all the applicants, candidates, on completion of the interview process. In fall of last year, I was in the same situation. I was asked questions by various organizations related to why I wanted to run for school board. So I appreciate all of your preparation in this entire process. I have myself not done an interview professionally in quite some time, but I believe when you provide your responses as full and complex as they may be, it really gives us an idea of who you are as a person, your life experiences, your education, why you are here. And while obviously we cannot anticipate how you would respond in every decision potentially we will make in the future, it really helps to determine how we could work together as a board based on your responses. So I greatly appreciate the time and effort involved. This process is definitely much more difficult than I thought it would be. So I, you know, in taking notes, there were times when I really just had to star a response because some of the responses were very stellar, and it spoke to me so much. So I appreciate that as well. And ultimately, I think what I'm hearing, and I greatly appreciate this, is the applicants who understand that while you may have your own viewpoints, while you may have your own opinions on certain things that are presented to us here at the board, ultimately, we think about our kids, our students, our community. And so that is why we're all here. So I appreciate that. And for me, yeah, I would like to say thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Vice President, Mr. Noyola.
Thank you, President Nishi. I just wanted to thank every single candidate for taking the time to apply, taking the time to be here today. As somebody who is an appointee, I understand all the sacrifices that you've made to be here today, all the preparation that goes into this moment. I just want to thank you guys. And quite honestly, if I was a candidate, I would be very nervous going up against each and every one of you guys because you guys did an amazing job. I think the way you guys answered each question was right on, from my perspective, exactly what we're looking for, for a board candidate. I think you guys' experience, your thought process, really speaks to what our mission is here at ABC, which is, you know, focusing on children, giving them those opportunities. So this is going to be a very tough decision, but I, again, thank you guys for taking the time and wanting to step up in these challenging times that we're going to be going through together. So once again, thank you.
Thank you. It says Dr. Rios, but I think it's Ms. Mendoza.
Am I doing the wrong one?
I think it's Ms. Mendoza.
Here, let me cancel it.
Unless she just kind of showed up here.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not used to the seat. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I just want to echo my colleagues. I want to say thank you to all of you who applied for this position. It's not, it's not an easy thing to take this on because knowing that if you become a school board member, your life becomes very public. You know, everything, your family, your finances and everything. So I know this was not an easy decision to do. I think all of you are more than qualified to, you know, take this position on. But ultimately, I think we all need to vote for the person who is, who we believe is going to be the best fit for the district. But saying this again, you are all more than qualified, and I appreciate that you're here. I think it goes to show how important you think this position is to be here during spring break. You know, our district is on spring break. You're here. Some of your kiddos might be, you know, at home waiting for you. So thank you again, and I look forward to whoever this next school board member, I look forward to working with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Su Yu.
Good morning, everyone. And I want to thank my fellow colleagues and also especially the candidates who, you know, for taking your time to apply. And each one of you, hearing your answers, I was very impressed. And wow, so many qualified people. So we are so thankful that our district, this district is just so blessed to have all these qualified people, including my fellow, you know, board members apply to serve in this community for our next generation. And our district, our community, we are faced with important and tough decisions in these coming months and years, which will impact the future welfare of ABC District. As you all know, what our state is faced with, with the budget throughout the entire California, declining enrollment, we all know that by now. And so it's going to be not a fun work, but tough decisions to make. And right now, our board is made up of two educators, two teachers, you know, one of them is in the admin. We're so blessed because they're the insider. And so they're very understand, and they know what's going on in the district, in this classroom. So that's a real blessing. And serving on the board is really a sacrifice. It's a high calling. It's a noble calling. And that's why we are called public servants because we're serving the different stakeholders. And going forward, it is so important to have another board member who is connected to the community, who grew up, who have children in the district, and who also have a strong leadership and a business mindset that can look at the data, that can look at professional studies that was done, that can connect with administrators and the community as a whole, and to make the tough decision for the best welfare of our district. I'm just going back to, you know, reminiscing about when we were campaigning for the bond. And, you know, as a conservative, it was a very tough decision. I was very torn. And I know a couple of my fellow board members, really, we had a lot of discussion. But at the end of the day, you know, I supported the bond. And that was when I was the president of the board. It was very tough. I had a lot of people who didn't speak to me for many years. But when the pandemic came, and we had all these shooting incidents all over the nation, you know, the first thing we did with the bond was with the facility, we put cameras and fences and secured all the schools. That was the first thing we did. And that was the best thing we did initially, you know, and that was really what really, you know, made me very, 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 very happy. And also upgrade the bathrooms. You know, some of the decisions that we make as a board will have an impact, you know, down the years. And so appointing a board member at this time is also, I take it very seriously because making decisions should not be, we need leader who can make the tough decision without so much personal feelings or who you're going to hurt, who you're going to offend, but what's best for the big picture, for this entire district that will affect, impact the community as a whole, and all the, you know, seven cities under our district. Okay? So thank you very much. And whatever the decision is, you know, we have to work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board member Yu. So I have a quick statement. I don't know if it's quick, but everybody here did a good job in being short and to the point. Everyone here very much qualifies, not just because you applied and you're in the particular area, but because of all of your backgrounds. I think each and every one of you have a lot to offer to this school board. And I just love the fresh faces, actually. It's refreshing to see whole new perspectives that I haven't seen before. Saying that, this is a crazy job, right? We're going to throw you into a situation where there's no training, there's no baby steps, here's how to do it. You're going to be right here on the dais. And normally, it's a situation where we're all together, but we all come from super different backgrounds. We all have very different political beliefs. But up here, we have to act as one body. Up here, we set those differences aside. We have to believe that each one of us have the same motivation, which is education and doing the best for our kids. And working with people we might not work with outside of the, outside of this boardroom, you know, it's good to have an outside relationship, but it's more important that we can work with people who are different than us. And so that, I think, is a key factor that we have here. Experience within the specific needs of our community and our ability to work with each other. And basically, not saying all the things I necessarily believe about the other person. Those are the key factors, I think, we have. And so that's the difficult decision. I don't want anybody here to interpret a no vote as something, a diss against them, because it is absolutely not that. And I know it's going to be hard because you've put your beliefs and everything on the line with what you've said. But it's, it's not that. You are all qualified for this job. You would all do a great job. It's just that this particular juncture in our school board history, we're going to have to make certain decisions that are not going to be that much fun and bring our community together. And that's, that's going to be critical. There's a lot of little details, but a lot of it is what we can do to bring ourselves together. So with that, I think I've exhausted my five minutes. Sure, I'll start with, I guess we're going to go right into voting. So let's have a...
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, for voting, are the board members, are we going to have yes, only one yes, or can we say yes or no on each candidate?
Go ahead.
So as part of the process, we'll do a roll call vote for each candidate. In this process, you will vote on every candidate, and you can vote yes on more than one. If we have a tie, we will then re-vote on just those that are tied.
And we need a majority?
Correct.
And a majority of those present, or the majority...
No, we'd have to have a majority, which is four, which is our normal majority.
Right. So even though we're short board members...
We've got the majority of the full board.
Of the full board, correct.
Further, President Nishi, further clarification. We can vote for more than one person?
Correct.
Up to how many can we...
There's no limit.
Okay, thank you.
The only restriction we have is that we get to a majority of the entire board.
Mr. President, another question. Once a candidate has the majority, we stop there? Do we continue voting?
We continue voting.
Okay. And then, and then if there's two candidates that have majority, then they go to runoff?
Correct. If they are tied, then we go to runoff.
Thank you.
And I should be letting the superintendent say that.
You're fine. It's two different voices saying the same thing. It's perfectly fine.
All right.
All right. So we will now conduct the roll call vote for each candidate for the provisional appointment of a board member to trustee area five. Board members will just vote yes or no on each and every candidate with no further discussion. Liz Su, roll call vote, please, for candidate number one, Hugo Enciso.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
No.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
No.
Two, three. Two ayes, three nos.
Thank you. Candidate number two, Ms. Liz Su, roll call vote for Camille Wallace-Flanigan.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
No.
Mr. Noyola?
No.
Mr. Nishi?
No.
Zero ayes.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please, for candidate number three, Jean McHatten.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
Yes.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
That's four, zero.
Thank you. For candidate number four, roll call vote for Nios Thamarax.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
No.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
It's three, three ayes.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please, for candidate number five, Mr. Mel Cortez.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
No.
Mr. Noyola?
No.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please, for candidate number five, Mr. Mel Cortez.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
No.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
No.
It's two, three. Two ayes, three nos.
Thank you. Candidate number two, Ms. Liz Su, roll call vote for Camille Wallace-Flanigan.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
No.
Mr. Noyola?
No.
Mr. Nishi?
No.
Zero ayes.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please, for candidate number three, Jean McHatten.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
Yes.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
That's four, zero.
Thank you. For candidate number four, roll call vote for Nios Thamarax.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
No.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
It's three, three ayes.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please, for candidate number five, Mr. Mel Cortez.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
No.
Mr. Noyola?
No.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please, for candidate number six, Samantha Lawrence.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
Yes.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
And candidate number seven, roll call vote, please, for Ms. Maria Villegas.
Mrs. Mendoza?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
Yes.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Three ayes. Summarize. Of all the votes or just one?
Just the one that had enough.
Four? Four ayes for Ms. Jean McHatten.
Can you say it officially? Is that the sheet?
Well, we...
Okay.
All right, based upon the votes and the great people that have applied, can I have a motion, a second, to make the provisional appointment of Jeanne McHatten in accordance with Education Code Section 509.1 and ABC Board Bylaw 9223 to fill the vacancy in trustee area five?
So move Mendoza.
Second, Tatiana.
So let's have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Sorry, Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Doc, Mrs. Yu? Yes. Mrs. Yokoyama-Bui?
Yes.
Mr. Noyola?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call on Dr. Zietlow to administer the oath of office to the trustee area five board member and that she was selected.
We'll have Ms. McHatten come on up. You'll repeat after me. I, Jeanne McHatten.
Hi, Jeanne McHatten.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend...
Make that a smaller... Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend... Am I supposed to have my hand up?
Yes.
Should we start again?
There's no laws about that. It's okay.
Okay.
Your words are what matter.
Okay.
You will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
You may make a comment from the dais.
Okay, well, thanks for the instructions. Well, I am so glad to be here. This was kind of a harrying process to go through, but I enjoyed responding to all the questions, thinking them through. I think this board does have a lot of important decisions to make within the next year and I'll be very glad to be part of that. I love this community, I love the schools, and so, you know, my heart is definitely in the right place. It's all about kids and doing the best thing for kids, whether they be high achievers or struggling. So I'm just so glad to be part of the ABC District. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we have our last number on the agenda, which is adjournment. But before we talk about that, I just wanted to thank everyone again for coming out and again, a vote of no doesn't mean you weren't qualified. It means that, just a different situation. And also that we have some sort of GARR event happening next week, I believe, before our school board meeting, I think on Saturday at nine o'clock. So look on our website for the GARR event. I think it's a pop-up market. Motion for adjournment.
Second, Noyola.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Are we taking a picture?
Yes.